Really? You guys ready? I gotta repeat every single, yep, everything. It's like a whole book. Might as well go to the library. Where's the librarian? You guys ready? I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order, please, at six o'clock. A roll call. Planning Commission Secretary, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Present.
Commissioner Ayala. Vice Chair Jimenez.
Present.
Chair Sarno.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Next, Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to call upon Joe Flores to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Do you have a hand over your heart? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
Next, Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials an opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearing. Are there any ex parte communications?
None.
None?
None.
And I have none. Changes to the agenda. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chair. Staff recommends to pull item number three from the consent calendar and continue it to a future meeting. This would come back to you as an amendment.
Item number three. Okay. That's the consent?
Yeah, on the consent.
On the consent, okay. So do we have to? Nothing? Okay. Public comments on non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. At this point, the general public may address the Planning Commission on both non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. Comments relating to public hearing items will be heard during the public hearing. Please be aware, the maximum time allowed for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action or entertaining, extending discussion on any topic listed on the agenda. Please show the courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the chairperson. Planning Commission Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak?
None.
Okay. Planning Commission Secretary, please be, I will now close the public comments and move on to the next item. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar items are considered routine. Any constant consent items a planning commissioner wishes to discuss can be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. I would like to put, to pull item number six and number three? And number three. For consent items, numbers one, two, four, five, seven, and eight, is there a motion and a second for the approval of these consent items?
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala. Vice Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Chair Sarno.
Aye.
Passes four zero.
So ordered. There is a fourteen-day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal these matters. I will be recusing myself from participating in the discussion or vote on item number six. The property is within a five-hundred-foot radius to my business. At this time, I will exit the chamber and I will pass the gavel to Vice Chair Jimenez to conduct the meeting. All right, I'll see you guys later. I'm out.
I'm gonna go to Raisin K.
Thank you, Chair Sarno. I will now take over the meeting for the discussion of consent item number six. Compliance review of conditional use permit, case number six-three-two-dash-A, request to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an open storage yard used for the temporary storage and parking of automobiles on a thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot property located at one-one-five-eight-four Perkins Avenue within the M-two heavy manufacturing zone. Are there any questions from the commissioners before we proceed with the vote? Okay, no questions for consent item number six. Is there a motion and a second approval of this item?
I'll move.
Do we get a second? So what happens? I'll second. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Flores.
Nay.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Would Commissioner, Suzie, would Commissioner Ayala vote on this? Or should we allow him the opportunity to know what he's voting on?
Should I redo it?
So if these prerogative agenda were on item, consent item number six?
Okay, so we're on a compliance review of conditional use permit, case number six-three-two-dash-A, and it's request to allow the continued operation and maintenance of an open storage yard used for temporary storage and parking of automobiles on a thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot property located on one-one-five-eight-four Perkins Avenue within the M-two heavy manufacturing zone. And...
Okay, so I'll call, roll call again. Commissioner Flores.
Nay.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Passes three zero, or three one.
Okay, so so ordered. There is a fourteen-day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal these matters. With that, I will now return the gavel to Chair Sarno.
And babies. All right. How you doing, sir? Uh, so we are...
We're on next page, Chair. Next page, yeah, right here.
Okay, so public hearing. We will now begin with item number nine on the agenda. At this time, I will open the public hearing at six-oh-five PM. I will call upon Economic Development Specialist Claudia Jimenez to introduce this item.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Members of the audience.
Yeah, talking to the mic?
Nope.
Ms. Cervantes, again. Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the audience, city attorney, and staff. Today, I present to you item number nine. For your consideration, it's a request to consider the revocation of conditional use permit, case number seven-nine-four-five-nine-one-seven-six-seven-six-five-five-six-five-three, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-five-twenty-six-forty-four-eighty-seven, and entertainment conditional use permit, case number fifteen, pursuant to section code one-five-five-point-eight-one-one-D of the city zoning code, and this is continued from the June ninth PC Commission meeting. So item nine is a request to review and consider the revocation of multiple conditional use permits in accordance with section code one-five-five-point-eight-one-one-D of the city zoning code. This item was continued from the June nine, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting to allow for further review. The permits under consideration include conditional use permit, case number seven-nine-four-five-nine-one-seven-six-seven-six-five-five-six-five-three, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number ASCUP twenty-five-twenty-six-forty-four-eighty-seven, and entertainment conditional use permit, case number fifteen. These permits are associated with uses that have either ceased operation or have been inactive for more than one year and qualifying them for revocation under the applicable zoning code provisions. So the following properties are associated with the conditional use permits under consideration for revocation. One-oh-one-four-one Freeman Avenue owned by RGA Financial Management under CUP seven-nine-four, one-three-eight-zero-eight Imperial Highway owned by PS Service, PS Southern California One Corp. under CUP five-nine-one, nine-nine-four-zero Bell Ranch Road owned by AMB Property under CUP seven-six-seven, one-one-six-four-two Pike Street owned by Demas and Lily Diaz under CUP six-five-five, one-four-three-one-seven Valley View owned by Franchise Realty Interstate Corp. under CUP six-five-three. And there are also several permits associated with alcohol sales entertainment uses, such as one-two-six-two-three Imperial Highway owned by Bruce Plaza Trust includes ASCUP twenty-five-twenty-six and fifteen for E- Entertainment Conditional Use Permit, and one-two-eight-zero-one Excelsior owned by GLC-SFS-two LLC under ASCUP forty-four, and one-four-four-zero-four Best Avenue owned by Best Avenue Center LLC under ASCUP eighty-seven. All these permits are tied to uses that have ceased operation, have been inactive again for over a year, which meets criteria for revocation under section code one-five-five-point-one-eight-one-D of the zoning code. So the reasons for the revocation. Revoking permits in inactive, revoking permits for inactive and discontinued uses ensures the city's land use records remain current and accurate. Retaining inactive permits can lead to confusion during future planning or development reviews. Permit revocation also helps streamline regulatory oversight by removing unnecessary tracking or non-operable uses, and this approach aligns with the intent of the zoning code to maintain clear and accurate and unforeseeable land use entitlements. In accordance to section code one-five-five-point-eight-one-three of the city zoning code, revocation letters were sent out via certified mail to the business owners at least ten days prior to this hearing. And additionally, a public hearing notice was published in the Los Rosarios Community Newspaper on May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Legal notices were also mailed to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject sites and posted at City Hall, the library, Town Center, both in May and again on August fourteenth. And as of today, no appeals or public inquiries have been received. Per section code one-five-five-point-eight-one-one-D of the city zoning code, permits may be revoked if the approved use has ceased and remained inactive for over one year, and staff is recommending the revocation of the following permits due to prolonged inactivity and discontinued operations. Specifically, we are requesting revocations of five conditional use permits. That's CUP seven-nine-four-five-nine-one-seven-six-seven-six-five-five and six-five-three, and four alcohol sales conditional use permits, ASCUP twenty-five-twenty-six-forty-four and eighty-seven, and one entertainment conditional use permit, case number fifteen, and all associated with either have ceased operation or the site has been redeveloped. And so therefore, these permits are no longer necessary and meet the conditional, the conditions for revoking under the code. And this concludes my presentation for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission have any questions for, comments for staff? No? Does any member of the commission have any questions for the applicant? Nope? All right. The public hearing is now open at six-twelve PM for a request to consider revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit number twenty-five. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. No? Um, so just go to, if there is no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for the revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-five, at six-fourteen PM. All right. The public hearing is now open at six-fourteen PM for a request to consider revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-six. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on the matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nope? If there is no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for the revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-six, at six-fifteen. The public hearing is now open at six-fifteen for a request to consider the revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number forty-four. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. You don't want to say nothing? You sure? All right. If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing and for the revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, number forty-four. Next. The public hearing is now open at six-sixteen for a request to consider revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, number eighty-seven. If there's anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter, if so, please approach the podium. If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of alcohol sales conditional use permit, number eighty-seven, at six-sixteen. All right, the public hearing is now open at six-sixteen for a request to consider revocation of conditional use permit, case number five-nine-one. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of conditional use permit, five-nine-one, at six-seventeen. The public hearing is now open at six-seventeen for a request to consider revocation of conditional use permit, case number six-five-three. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nope? If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of conditional use permit, case number six-five-three, at six-seventeen. The public hearing is now open at six-seventeen for the request to consider revocation of conditional use permit, number six-five-five. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. If there is no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of conditional use permit at six-seventeen PM. The public hearing is now open at six-seventeen for a request to consider revocation of conditional use permit, number seven-six-seven. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing and revocation of conditional use permit, case number seven-six-seven, at six-eighteen PM. The public hearing is now open at six-eighteen PM for the, for a request to consider revocation of conditional use permit, number seven-nine-four. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nope? Is there any, if there is no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of conditional use permit, case number seven-nine-four, at six-nineteen PM. The public hearing is now open at six-nineteen PM for the request to consider the revocation of entertainment conditional use permit, number fifteen. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. If there's no questions or objections, I will now close the public hearing for revocation of entertainment conditional use, case number fifteen, at six-nineteen PM. If there's no further commissioned questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing at six-nineteen PM. May I have a motion to approve the request to consider the revocation of conditional use permit, case numbers seven-nine-four-five-nine-one-seven-six-seven-six-five-five-six-five-three, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number twenty-five-twenty-six-forty-four-eighty-seven, and entertainment conditional use permit, number fifteen, and adopt resolution numbers two-nine-one-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-two-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-three-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-four-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-five-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-six-dash-two-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-seven-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-eight-dash-twenty-twenty-five, two-nine-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-five, and three-hundred-twenty-twenty-five. Bless you. Which incorporates the Planning Commission findings as actions regarding this matter. Whew. Can I take a break now?
You sound like a priest.
Bless you, my child. I'll move. Can I have a first and a second, please?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, please conduct a roll vote.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala. Vice Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Chair Sarno.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
So ordered. There is a fourteen-day appeal period for any wishing, anyone wishing to appeal this matter. Item number ten on the agenda, I would call upon Community Development Director Kwan Nijin to introduce this item.
Evening commissioners. Before you today is a request for a time extension for three specific entitlements at one-zero-eight-four-five Norok Boulevard. This is both an aerial and a site plan of the property related to development plan approval case number one thousand and one thousand and one. As you can see, it's a development of two industrial buildings measuring approximately sixty-nine thousand square feet and another second building at seventy-five thousand square foot, replacing the existing buildings that were on-site and have since been demolished. In addition to the development plan approvals, the applicant did secure entitlements for a tentative parcel map, specifically eight-four-one-one-six, which essentially subdivided the property, also including the vacation of coots into two separate parcels, one measuring three-point-three-three acres and a second measuring three-point-nine-nine acres. Just a quick rendering to show the project as it was approved and presented originally. As you can see, it is an attractive project. We do look forward to seeing it built. This is before you today. As you know, other time extensions are in your consent calendar item. However, this was specifically noticed as a public hearing, and, and it is because originally staff initially prepared to recommend denial of the requests due to just basically ongoing neglect, repeat violations from the code, and just lack of forward momentum. Going back two years, this site has, has been an ice ore. There's been code enforcement actions taken, and staff was originally prepared to, to recommend denial. Just to show kind of some of the things that you probably saw out there, including some, some graffiti on the adjacent neighbor's wall. some graffiti on the adjacent neighbor's wall, basically overgrown weeds, unmaintained landscaping, and you know, pretty fairly high mounds of dirt, which is, although an ISO, it is a requirement that the applicant does retain the, the soil on-site. It has since been reduced. The graffiti has been cleaned up and painted over, and the site is now being maintained. So as a result of that, as well as recent discussions with the applicant, seeing some renewed commitment, staff is now prepared to recommend a one-year time extension. However, because of the, the concerns that, that previously existed and to ensure that there's ongoing maintenance of the site and movement of the project, staff is recommending that you approve it subject to 12 new conditions of approval. Just to go over really quickly, the 12 conditions, there are seven conditions attached to your recommendation, which deals with ongoing security and maintenance. We are requiring cameras to be installed, which my understanding is it's already installed. We are requiring that it be continually monitored, at least a minimum of five visits per week. Make sure that trash, graffiti, and landscaping is continually maintained. And also just also make sure that there's coordination with the city in terms of removal of encampments. Historically, there's also been issues with homeless setting up camp at this site as well. In regards to conditions 8 through 11, this just basically ensures that the project moves forward and moves forward timely. We do require that vertical construction is, is seen within 12 months, as well as asking for updates on the process and progress with DTSC clearance, and, and we not renew any expired permits that currently exist on file. And lastly, we, we worked with the, the applicant and the city, as with all developments. We do want to, to be able to work with applicants and developers to see if we can have at least some discussions of basically tenants or buyers that locate into the city to see if we can influence and make sure that the, the future tenant or buyer does at least meet economic development goals and policies of the city. You know, we'd like to at least see if we can work with developers and, and make sure that those discussions do take place, and not just let properties change hands without at least some discussion and effort to make that happen. So with that said, staff is recommending a one-year time extension of the three entitlements. We are recommending that you adopt resolution 301-2025, which incorporates your findings and actions regarding the matter. And lastly, to direct staff to continue to monitor for compliance and provide you with quarterly update reports, just to make sure that things continue to be maintained moving forward. That concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant is in the audience, should you have any questions, as well as myself.
Does any member of the commission have any questions or comments for staff?
I do. So, so why, why was the property not being monitored? Why is it taking this to have that space cleaned in our city?
Well, that's a...
I'll let the applicant answer that.
So do you want, do you have anything specifically for...
No, not for Kwan, no.
I, I, I do have something for, how long is, so if we give them one year, and then the permit process is how long?
So...
Could be a year, it could be two years, it could be, how long?
Be, it's my understanding, construction drawings have been submitted and actually, in fact, they're actually ready to be pulled, as well as grading, they just need to renew the grading permit. So it's, it's ready to move forward. What's holding it back is the DTSC clearance. So as soon as DTSC clearance is provided, and they work through the relocation of water wells, commitments of construction activities can begin.
So what is that, what is that timeline though, about roughly? I'm not gonna...
Yeah, I, I'll let, to see if Grant can have an answer to that.
Okay, that's fine, we'll, we'll let him come up.
We're anticipating it happens within this next 12 months.
Okay.
But as far as the city plans are concerned, our approval process, it's, it's more or less ready to go.
It's ready to go. Okay.
Do you guys have any provisions in this resolution if they fail to abide by their maintenance of the property?
Yeah, so...
Like if there's ongoing failures, can you just revoke? Is there like after three or two or whatever, certain amount of time?
Yes. Short answer, yes. There's always the ability to revoke, regardless of the time extension, we could take any C, any entitlement back, but there's specifically condition 11, which basically says if the applicant fails to make any meaningful progress on the development or fails to comply with certain conditions, within 30 days of receiving written notice, the city may schedule a public hearing before the planning commission to consider revocation of the granted time extension.
Wong, what does define this meaningful?
It's, it's, I think, you're right. I, I think meaningful will, should be described in basically whatever notice that, that we provide to them, we would, we would probably do a, some sort of, provide some clarity on that in, in the notice of violation or notice of making sure that that is adhered to.
I guess we can...
I have a question. They can't prevent the graffiti. That's just going to happen because we know how people are. Do they have a timeline from the minute, who, who handles the graffiti in terms of, does the city identify it? Are they required to make inspections and then they have so many hours or days to remove the graffiti?
I think there's, I think there is ways that they can defer their graffiti. This is not, they can stop it by putting better fencing, security cameras, knowing that who's around the element and checking up on it on, on a daily basis.
You're still going to get kids that are going to be able to get around that. So my question is, is do we have like a time limit? They get, I know, because on the weekend, there's not going to be, that's probably when it's going to get done. Because they check it every day, but on weekends it doesn't. So like, say for instance, on Monday, there's graffiti, do they immediately clear it?
Security cameras now, when somebody walks on the property, it alerts the, the technology, so it's instantaneously. So the new, do you ever see in the parking lots, they have cameras on a trailer?
Right.
So those cameras are monitored 24 hours a day.
That's what they will have.
And that's what they're supposed to have.
Yeah.
And it was in the picture, I seen it.
Oh, okay.
So once somebody walks on that property or there's movement, then security should be notified that something's happened.
And, and, and I, I agree. So in, in, in our city, right, whenever there's graffiti up and you, you go onto the go Santa Fe Springs app, you report it. I've reported things at seven in the morning, by the time I come back at two in the afternoon, it is cleaned up. So that's, that's the expectation that we have from this applicant.
Yeah. And, and to further reinforce, condition number five, ends with graffiti shall be removed within 48 hours of discovery. So that, that, that does provide added to that.
So could we bring up the, do you want me to put the, the, does any member of the commission have any questions or comments for the applicant? So.
Yeah. Why was there such a delay of maintaining the property? And you know, then now you want us to grant, you know, one-year extension, but it was neglected for two years. Is there any reasonable explanation for that?
Yeah. So, thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me the opportunity. Grant Ross, I'm managing partner of Orbis Real Estate Partners. We've, we've only been entitled for a year. That's why we're here for a one-year extension. We, we actually demolished the buildings through the course of this year, so it hasn't been neglected for two years. We tore down the structures on behalf of the city recommending that we tear down the structures. And obviously, in hindsight, we wish the structures were there because they could be occupied and maybe self-maintaining some of those activities. We did commence demolition. We did secure the site in terms of fencing for the property. We have spent in excess in the last year, in excess of a million dollars moving forward on this project from environmental cleanup in terms of DTSC, removing pipes. We actually have construction documents on both buildings that have gone through multiple plan checks. They are now approved. We're waiting for our grain, grading permit to be approved. We're waiting for our parcel map to be approved. It's on hold right now based on the decision of, of this evening. In terms of, I guess, the lack of response time to some of the concerns that, that the city has expressed, and I do want to express my gratitude to the community development director, to staff, to the city manager, as we've kind of collectively come to a, I think, an understanding regarding some things. There are some challenges that the, that the site has presented itself. One, the, the graffiti that has taken place is not technically on our property. Right? So there are rights that an individual needs to have to go correct graffiti on someone else's property in order to mitigate that. So when it comes to graffiti and graffiti on a neighboring property, that isn't, when a code violation comes out, that isn't, you know, something that we could rectify immediately. We've established a relationship with the neighboring owner. The neighboring owner definitely, you know, hopes to see this extension take place because without an extension, this property sits in perpetuity in its existing condition. So we've gone and, and paid for the remediation of their site. Obviously, coordination needs to take place at any point in order to paint someone else's building to the extent it has some sort of obstruction to it. But we, we certainly have made our commitments. We have the fight, the site fenced and secured. People have broken in. We've now added a 24-hour monitoring camera that, that does have a security system in place. The second that, you know, that happens, one, police is supposed to be notified as well as us, and we'll take immediate action associated with that. So some of these things, I would say, have not been in our control. I would say that now understanding the city's point of view and staff's point of view, that we've made additional commitment levels to ensure that whatever we can mitigate, we're going to mitigate. And I think the conditions that are suggested in the package that you guys have in front of you certainly address some of those items. I can assure you that from an ownership perspective, while sometimes you, you can contain a private property, you cannot, you can, you can do your best to prevent private individuals from coming on, from public property, like the sidewalks, onto private property and vandalize your site. And so certainly, we've been actively making whatever corrections that we can, you know, to make that a correction. One thing I just want to point out, to, to rest assured, the standard in which we're cleaning up our site, in which we've spent in excess of a million dollars to date over the course of last year, in coordination with DTSC, is in the best interest of every human that walks into the city of Santa Fe Springs, any future person that walks into the future buildings that are in Santa Fe Springs, and the community that surrounds our property. We have worked and spent every dollar that we can to move that process forward as quickly as possible. The second DTSC says we can go onto our property and clean and mitigate a specific item, we take immediate action. And there are records and logs that prove these points, and I just hope you guys understand that we're going to take that type of proactive protocol. Unfortunately, what you see driving by the site sometimes doesn't necessarily suggest the commitment that we have to the site. The honor in which we feel that, that doing business in Santa Fe Springs is a pleasure, we don't take that lightly. In terms of ongoing work and communications with the city, we recognize that our site has, you know, kind of quasi-retail. It's one of the things that we loved about the real estate. We understand that it presents a unique opportunity. There are some tenant requirements that the city has, you know, been aware of or will continue to be made aware of, that we are going to work closely with the community development, the city manager, who I made a personal commitment to. We share one another's cell phones going forward, as I do with the community development director, and meetings with the economic development, because our site does lend itself to potentially finding a mutually beneficial tenant that could potentially generate sales tax revenue or, and/or job creation. And so we're working hand in hand, and when so, when it, when it was referred to in the staff report, in terms of the collaboration that we expect to take place, you have my wholehearted commitment. Everyone has my cellphone. The commitment level is there. I can assure you, up until this point, the financial commitment has always been there. I understand that it hasn't been seen on a regular basis associated with the condition of the site. There has been some conversations about the mound on the property and why can't it be removed. When we demolish the structures, the California Green Code requires that the demolition of the structures requires that the aggregate that can be used in the future development stay on-site. And it's illegal for us to remove that aggregate off-site when we can use it on-site. So you have my personal commitment. City manager has had my personal commitment. And, you know, I really want, you know, I can't thank community development director The fact that he was elevated to, to the position that he was, from an outsider's perspective doing business, was a godsend to the city. And I just want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to do business here, but also for the commitment that staff has shown, because I truly, truly appreciate that. This isn't something that I take lightly, so.
I have a, just a quick follow-up, please. So you stated that the things were out of your control with the security upgrades with fencing and cameras and everything. Can you commit to us that now you are confident with your assessment that now you are in control of maintaining your property and responding quickly?
Certainly, the conditions require that, and with, without the conditions, you, you have our commitment that we will be doing so. So we did find technology that allowed us to have that surveillance camera. You know, there were means in which, not that there can't be tomorrow, I think to, to your point, that no matter how much fencing that we continue to correct on a regular basis, you know, people are, are, are coming from outside and coming onto our private property. But you have our commitment to securing the premises to the extent damage is taking place, we're taking immediate action and then rectifying whatever vandalism is taking place on-site. Hopefully that addresses...
Yeah.
I think that answered all the questions. I just got, I got something.
Go ahead.
It's for Kwan. So Kwan, are, so is the community development department going to hold them accountable or for being proactive for anything that goes on?
So, as mentioned in one of the recommendations, we'll continue to monitor it. We'll give you quarterly updates, and, you know, the moment we see a condition that is not being complied with, we'll provide that notice of 30, to give them 30 days to comply. And if that doesn't happen, we'll bring it back to revoke.
Despite Wong mentioning the 30 days, the, the conditions expectation is that those, rectifying certain situations would be quicker than the 30 days in terms of notification. We do have surveillance cameras, not necessarily on a temporary basis, but we have surveillance cameras on other properties that we own, and we're able to tie that directly to the police service. We have offered and will continue to offer to Whittier Police a direct...
Line.
Connection, line to our cameras, so that there would be that immediate response time. But, but we pay someone every day, 24 hours a day, to immediately contact us as well as Whittier Police if they ever see anything. And I think you can see from the camera and the way that the site's built, those cameras provide the proper, you know, exposure, assuming no one comes from the mobile homes to the south of the property or, you know. But certainly, if any actions taken, those will be, will be corrected.
I, you can say, I have a couple of questions or comments for you. So I'm, I'm the only one on here that's actually been a council member, and being the mayor last year, seeing the graffiti on the wall and just the way that looked, I got a lot of slack for that as far as the upkeep. And you're right, you, we don't have the means to always watch a property 24 hours a day. And you're right, you, we don't have the means to always watch a property 24/7, and and things do happen. But it doesn't mean that you can't keep a property upkept. The money that you put in, the entitlements, the, all the permit process and all that stuff, you you know that going into this, into the process, to build a beautiful building that you're going to build. But it doesn't mean that the city and the community need to look at a building like that while you're doing that. And to have a little bit of just love for the for the community to not see graffiti on a wall, like you guys just said, you ought to coordinate with your neighbor to paint. Well, why couldn't they just paint it the color of the building instead of a big gold gray? Because it would have cost more money to paint it over the old graffiti, right? It would have been double and triple coats. But that's not our fault. That's not the community's fault. We shouldn't have to look at an eyesore because you guys don't want to have to spend a little bit more money to upkeep the building that you guys took down, whether it's on the city's dime or the city's requirement or request. It should be have done just to maintain a building and the and the property outside the weeds. The temporary fence that you guys have, that's not going to hold anybody back. So those things need to be adequate for the community. So when they drive by there, you're on a, we have 400 cars driving up and down that street every single day. And when they look at something like that, we don't want our city to look like it's a downtown LA area. We have, we have respect for this community.
Especially on the way to a new condominium development where people are
Exactly.
to see if they want to buy property in San.
So, so I I think what you guys have done is the bare minimum. Whatever, a million dollars that you spent doesn't show in 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 what it looks like today. So I would, I would suggest that you please put a better fencing up. You have the cameras up. Maintain the outside areas that the camp, that the the fence is not taking. There's still little pieces of curb. There's weeds. There's things that that are growing out. Those are things that you can maintain on a on a weekly basis. It's, yes, it's going to cost money. But why we should we have to look at that ugliness while we live here every single day, waiting for you to get a permit process or to do the things that you do? It's not fair to us.
So just to be clear, any graffiti that you've seen on the property at any point in the last year has not been on our property. So code enforcement, it is our neighbor's property.
What's done through your property, though? They got on your property to do that.
I understand, but if your neighbor gets graffitied, you don't have the legal right to go onto your neighbor's property and paint it.
No, no, I I understand that. I I get that. But but you're, they're using your property as the tool to get to that wall. They didn't, they didn't do it before.
I I understand they are also using the public sidewalks to get onto our property. We're doing the best that we can. We certainly has offered the thing. We now have coordination. The great pain was that the, our neighbor did not take action. The city painted it gray. And then we painted it gray because the city had painted it gray when we recently painted it.
But did that make sense?
We asked the neighbor, should we paint the property? He wanted, he said it was painted gray. He told us it's gray. We went out and got the gray that was suggested. We can talk to him about painting it white.
I I just, we look at it like it's a big eyesore. Whether there's graffiti there or there's a big old gray mark there, it still looks like crap. Excuse my language. But it's it's something that I think that needs to have a little bit more respect for the community and for the people that drive by this every single day, like myself. Being a council member, this doesn't help community members look at you like you're taking care of our city. It it makes it, it destroys the look of Santa Fe Springs. We try to keep a certain prestige about our our community. And I think, and I've told Kwan, not just your property, but a lot of developments that happen, we don't put enough pressure on you guys to make you understand that we're not going to allow you just to have a vacant place for two years or three years or a year and and not take care or maintain it. There's a certain level of of presence that we want to see. And I think it's not that hard to do if you just maintain it on a on a weekly basis, a monthly basis. Just, it it's part of you doing your entitlement of of understanding what it's going to be in that timeline of getting permit process and stuff like that. I know it hasn't been an easy one because I was, like I said, I'm on on council, so I know all about your property. I know everything. And you guys should have left the buildings there, even though they weren't that great. But it would have looked at least better than what it does today, so.
And I think the commitment level goes beyond what we can do at our property. A lot of the things I think that you're suggesting and the issues that you're bringing up would be weed abatement. I think, you know, part of the pain has been, how much can we upkeep our neighbor's property?
I I I don't think you need to keep throwing your neighbors. It's not your neighbor's property, it's you.
It's their wall. So I, we're going to, I've offered, I've painted their wall. I mean, I'm going to continue. If they tell me I can't paint their wall tomorrow,
I totally agree with that.
I legally can't paint their wall. You have just as much ability to paint your neighbor's house as I have to painting my neighbor's building.
Okay.
Is there the ability to put another fence where it'd be like a second barrier so they couldn't get to your neighbor's wall?
Yep.
So we've looked at it, and our best opportunity is trying to maintain, having the cameras, number one, but trying to secure the places in which that that they could move around, you know, I mean.
What is the, what is your property line between that building and your property line? What, how how wide is it or what's the difference?
I think it's a zero lot line that we're.
So it's a zero lot line? So then, so why don't we, yeah, can you put up the the thing? I was going to say, why don't we just put a 10-foot chaining fence between the two properties? So then, then they don't graffiti it.
So is, so is the neighbor giving you pushback on cleaning that up? Is that what it is?
No.
We've recently coordinated the opportunity of trying to step in on behalf of the owner. So, you know. So we think that the the best way to do it in terms of where some of these access points have taken place, we need, you know, certain things like a lock for fire to come on. And so they were cutting locks and accessing the property through those. We've double-secured those as well as bringing the fence, you know, where where it was kind of vandalized. We've made certain corrections. I think the 24-hour monitoring service has has obviously helped a tremendous amount in terms of, you can see any access point that comes outside of the mobile home park behind the mounds, our cameras have direct visibility to. And so.
And that's another question. So you have the mobile homes behind there. So we have seniors that live in there and all the dust. And how do you guys maintain any of that? Because all the dust that flies over.
So we we, we actually have to leave some of the shrubs there per California SWIP control. So they, there is a certain amount of dust requirement that we do have to maintain.
So have you guys done that? You've maintained the dust?
There, the, the, there's.
The weeds is what maintains the dust.
There's a certain level of of shrubs and weeds that you have to maintain per the SWIP codes. I think you're probably familiar with some of them or no. I mean, there, there, there are some requirements that you have to have. We're blading the site and and doing certain things. I could just tell you that our water quality management person, and we can submit something to the city that says that certain requirements are had. We obviously have to do weed abatement per the condition of approval. Any weeds that take place outside the fence that you actually physically see, we would obviously remove them. I'm just kind of quoting our water quality management person when we had these conversations about some of the weed abatement or the other things associated with dust.
Um, Kwan, what's the AQMD requirement for an empty lot with, an empty dirt lot?
I think that's, I guess, what I'm assessing from the comment associated with some sorts, certain shrubs is that there wants to be some prevention from, let's say, someone, you know, did some sort of leakage on the property, right, and came onto the site, that you're, you're not, SWIP is controlling any sort of runoff that would go into a public system.
So does that mean you can't just weed whack everything down and keep it?
We have, we have. There, there was a comment that was made associated with some of these things. My colleague spoke in terms of, in terms of directly coordinating with our consultant. But we, we certainly are going to make sure that it maintains, you know, a, an appropriate and, you know, aesthetically pleasing situation that won't take place.
I have a question. When you start development, you will stick to, stick to the strict guidelines of no noise before 7:00 AM because we do have our seniors' mobile home that there?
Yes, there are requirements. And on all of our developments, I specifically give our neighbors my personal cellphone to make sure that we are holding up to the best standards that we have, so.
And they will be able to contact you if they find something that
They will.
during the construction is affecting their mobile homes.
They will. You know, I guess, I joke, the good.
Our seniors are very important, so we need to make sure that they're happy.
As every human, and I just want to rest assured that those neighbors are in a better place because of the timeframe it's taking for us to follow the DTS standard in which we're cleaning the property. You know, tho- those requirements and the standard in which we're going are are far more expensive but are far better off for those people living there long-term. And and that is a commitment you're seeing to us. Right now, we're trying to get, you know, a, a, a situation where we're trying to please, you know, obviously, some of the conditions of the property. But I just want you to know, the commitment level in terms of some of these concerns that are being described in the best interest of those neighbors, that as, as I think, community development director could attest, the level in which we're going to with DTSC and the gold standard isn't a requirement since industrially zoned and you do a vapor barrier. We could leave it dirty to to a standard that is far lower than than what we're agreeing, paying, and coordinating with the Department of Toxic Substances. So I just, I want to point that out because that is part of the delay. And you don't see that in the shrubs. Sometimes you don't see that in the graffiti from the neighbor's property. But but the, the actual commitment in terms of the standard in which we're delivering our property really is, goes well above and beyond the requirements for our neighbor. And I just want to just kind of point that out. And I joke, the good, the bad, the ugly. You know, this company, you know, is my company. And so, you know, this isn't a large corporation of a person that could change tomorrow or one of 10,000 employees. So my cellphone is my cellphone. My commitment is my commitment. And the neighbors and everyone having access to it, you know, goes beyond what some may have in another situation.
Sorry, you're getting at that you could possibly be doing the bare minimal and you're doing a little bit more better by the way it looks? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, what I was trying to convey is the, the property has had toxic substances. There is environmental challenges in the area. And that we are cleaning the site from down below up in order to make sure that any person that comes into the city, any person that occupies the site in the future or the senior community that could occupy the mobile homes adjacent to us is better off because of the commitment level that we're doing and not the standard in which we could actually develop the property. And and that's to the tune of millions of dollars. So that's where I pointed out because I understand the frustration. I understand that perception may not be, perception is perception and perception is our reality. But the intent in which, and the value we're trying to provide, you know, isn't shown on what the site is. And our commitment to the city manager and the community development director and the commission tonight is that what we've been doing through the course of our entitlements, through the cleanup of the property, and now to the maintenance, that the maintenance effort will be comparable and parallel with all the efforts we've been doing.
I think your building will be beautiful when it's built. But the process of before it gets built is where we're at today. And I think that's where we look at it. You have a church across the street that every Sunday, they got to look at something like that. That's not something that, you know, the community wants to see. And and I get it. It's not easy always taking care of, you know, these are some things out of your hand. But I think the bare minimum of what you've done shows to that level. And I think we can all agree up here that that is what we've seen, the bare minimum. But I, what I have concerns of is every question of what we've brained as a concern, it's always been deflected as, well, I couldn't do this, or we can't do this, or we. This is your property. You're here to ask us for an extension. Do we want to have another year of looking at something like this? I sure don't. But if we don't, it could be longer. So I will hold you to the highest standards of what we we expect from the city as a, as a developer and and hold you hostage, in a sense, to make sure that you maintain the stuff that you say you will maintain.
I hope you do.
Because this is going to be a great building, hands down. I think it's going to be a beautiful building. But until we get to that point, we got to deal with this today. And I don't think you should be off the hook. I don't think it's fair to us to be reprimanded. You know, they get calls about this stuff every day, and we waste our taxpayer money on concerns that you should be involved in just as much, so.
And I, and I apologize for those circumstances. I apologize for what that has meant to the community. I certainly understand that you have every right to feel that way. You're certainly speaking on behalf of the community that you've heard complaints about. I I take that personally. I would, you know, I take the responsibility. And all I, all I have to do is an opportunity, and I've told Kwan every day, and I've committed to the city manager every day, that I'll, I'll exceed what I believe are the expectations, my personal commitment to those. There, there's no lack of responsibility, the fact of of what the perception has been. And and certainly, you know, all I could offer is, an apology is worth, you know, a word. Action is is kind of the commitment in which I can prove, you know, kind of provide to you and the neighbors around it to show the sincerity in which my words mean and.
Communication is the key to everything. And if we can't communicate with you or you can't communicate with us, it goes to somewhere. But I think us communicating with you and you hearing our message and you help communicate that back, we're here to help.
It was a sobering moment to be meeting with, with community development director as well as the city manager in terms of kind of what this pain point has been. We weren't, I wasn't, I don't want to make an excuse. You know, I should have been better off. All I can tell you is, I am sitting here with a personal commitment with, you know, kind of, you know, disappointment on my face. I've never, I can ask for a million referrals in all the cities I do business with. I do work on a personal level. It's heartfelt. I wear my heart on my sleeve. And I can assure you, this is, this is a disappointing first time. And, you know, and I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure, no matter where I am, this is the last time we don't do a million projects. And so.
I think if you were to start off with that, I think we'd all be a whole lot happier in that matter.
I'm sorry. You know, and I, and and I'm, I'm genuinely sorry that that it has been this. I mean.
So, you, you, you know, you're, you sound, it sounds very genuine, what you're saying. So genuine that I'm sure that you would be okay with us extending this approval of the extension until this is cleaned up to our standards. Would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I think what what basically.
Give them a timeline.
The, the, the standard above, I think what we're collectively talking about is that I will paint the neighbor's wall white or to mirror, you know, an existing color on there. That, those, those, that graffiti is gone today.
It's just gray.
The weeds are all gone today. The fence is corrected. The, everything, everything is corrected to the conditions of approval outside of the fact that it's, it's a plain gray. And I'll, I'll work with the, with the owner to make sure that we find, you know, the paint color to make it so that it isn't gray.
Just something that just doesn't stand out, like it's just a big old.
I get it.
Because it doesn't go all the way up. You can see the way they outlined it. It just looks the same as a graffiti piece, so.
I have a final kind of comment. I'd feel a lot better, yeah, having something similar paint as the building color. And also, I don't know if it's in the requirements, but does control for our seniors, paint color, suitable fence that's maintained at all times. And if graffiti is ongoing, then put a secondary fence far enough from the building where they can't get up that high with some roller. where they can't get up that high with some roller or something. You know, if we continue to have graffiti and these cameras and fencing aren't working, then we install a secondary fence.
Up against the...
Not up against, but away from the building so you can't be so close, and unscreened where you can see through it, where people can't hide behind it.
If it's, if it's up against the fence, they will still graffiti.
No, I'm saying...
I think when you see...
I'm saying a setback of like 10 or 15 feet.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that they'll, they'll graffiti if they want to graffiti. We need something more like, my opinion, you barbed wire right along that wall.
We would love to barbed wire the whole site. I think it's illegal, legal in the state of California.
It's a liability.
Fortunately, but I would just...
I mean, we would love to have a...
But electrocution, right?
I sent, I sent, I sent, and he, I actually sent something to, to my team today where there was, in Ontario Mills, there was a, a guard shack with one of the cameras, and I said, can we put this on Santa Fe Springs and it say sniper, sniper, you know, inside? So, um, I, I, I recognize and I, I share the pain, but we're here to correct it.
I, I believe that it doesn't matter what you do. If they want to graffiti, they're gonna graffiti. Uh, the surveillance will help. Um, but if they want to do it, they want to do it.
Yeah, I think you could see they kind of go well above any sort of fence line that could exist.
So it doesn't matter, but if you could, I don't believe because of time, you're gonna be able to match the paint exactly.
No, it's gonna be...
But it'll be, even if you have a white, white, brand-new wall, that's still better than the two tones that you have there.
Yeah. And when, yeah, when our painter went out, I was like, can you at least do the gray, the whole wall, so it looks like it actually did do, but we certainly will correct it with the white.
This is not today. This is... So it, it's cleaned, Quan, you guys have gone over there and cleaned up and they fixed it and...
Is there, yeah, is there an updated picture?
There is.
Can we have it?
I do.
If I could give the live 24-hour camera, I could show it to you on my phone.
Yeah, maybe it looks beautiful now. We're just bringing it on a little...
Well...
It's still gray though.
It's still gray.
They gotta do it live, so that's it.
Yeah, it's just gray.
And this is cleaned up already?
Yeah, he said it cleaned up.
Except for the mound of, mound of dirt that's...
No, the, the, it's base.
More or less, it looks like today.
Okay. How about the shrubs and all that? Do you have some people?
Uh, not...
No? You, you've been there. How does it look?
Of the fence?
Are those shrubs gonna be finished tomorrow? There's a commitment to get it done.
So could we say by the next, uh, commission meeting, could we get some updated pictures to see what it looks like and to...
Absolutely.
So...
So will we table it?
No, we can't table it. Well, it can be part of the, it could be part of the, when, if we see a violation or we don't agree to it, then that's when they'll send them a, a letter of violation.
Be yanked at any time.
So there can be an additional condition, number 13, if these are agreeable terms to the applicant and also to the, uh, commission. Condition number 13, a white paint on the neighboring wall, mitigation efforts to control the dust that are compliant with environmental laws, and a suitable fence to mitigate the graffiti. And that can be a discussion between the applicant and staff as to how that can best...
Well, wouldn't be a fence to mitigate the graffiti. It would be a fence if the graffiti continues and it doesn't, what's called, then we can look at that. But just something to, because right now, because the wall, there's a, a zero lot line, so we're saying, well, since they're using this property to graffiti on their property, putting something to...
And we said 48 hours is the, the, the response time? Okay.
I have a question.
I think that's fair.
Since we've actu-, since you've installed the surveillance cameras, has the graffiti stopped?
Yes.
So it has stopped because surveillance has been the deterrent at this point, so it looks like it's working.
Correct.
Real quick. Um, so a suggestion is, if you don't want to put that other fence, maybe buy a bunch of white paint, and as soon as it goes up, have someone go out there and...
We've, yeah, I mean, we've explored that.
Talk to your neighbor, have a understanding if there's graffiti.
Well, we, we have a graffiti crew, so if we backcharge them, if we say, okay, we'll take care of it on a day, then you can work with them to backcharge.
Yeah. That's who painted it originally.
Yeah, we, yes.
Okay, cool. That's good. All right.
So we started the gray, so I, I won't say anything because I already did that before.
Yeah, well...
So, yes. Um, all right, so, uh, the public hearing is now open at 7:07. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nobody. If there's no one objective to the members of the commission, I will close the public comments for public hearing item number 10. Uh, if there are no further com- commission questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing at...
I have one.
Oh, go ahead.
Are we adding additional requirements?
So, yeah, we're gonna add the...
Condition number 13, white paint to the neighboring wall and mitigation efforts to control the dust that are compliant with environmental laws.
Fence, well...
And suitable exterior fencing.
Yes.
Maintain it at all times.
Suitable exterior fencing, just to make sure that you guys keep the temporary fencing from being pushed over or moved and stuff like that. So just, again, send somebody once a week or something just to go over there to, to make sure it's in, you know, the upright position and it's not laying down or moved over.
Easily accessible.
Yes.
Okay, so just to recap, the condition number 13 is white paint for the neighboring wall, controlling the dust that are subject to environmental laws, and a suitable fence to mitigate trespass.
Yes. And maintain the wead abatement, uh, to a, a level of whatever the state requires or the city.
Want to just, since it acknowledged that that condition is acceptable and a heartfelt thank you to, to the commission, I, you know, I do apologize for the circumstance. I'm, it's embarrassing to be up here and having the issues that we're having, so just know, you know, it really is a genuine heartfelt apology.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair and, and Commission, do we also want to either add in the same condition or a different condition to bring this item back as a presentation?
Well, we can just bring it back as, as just...
As needed.
As, and as needed, but just bring it back at the next commission meeting, just as a updated, uh...
Good updates.
A good update of what it looks like in 30 days or wherever.
With some visualizing.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, yes. If there's a distraction, just provided to staff. We can agendize this for the next planning commission meeting with, with an update and the visual.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request for the time extension for development plan approval of numbers 1,000 and 1,001, and tentative parcel map number 84116, and adopt resolution number 301, 2025, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter, including condition number 13.
I'll move with the addition of condition number 13.
I'll second with the condition, uh, additional condition 13.
We have a first and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, please conduct the roll vote.
Certainly. Commissioner Flores?
Aye, with condition number 13.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Cassis 50 with condition number 13.
Item number 11 on the agenda. I call upon Planning Consultant Laura Ramirez to introduce this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. The last item before you this evening is to consider the proposed zoning text, or zoning code amendment to amend sections 155.003, 155.383, 155.384, and 155.519 within Title 15, which is a zoning code, and all of these are pertaining to billboards within the city. For some background on billboards in Santa Fe Springs, in November 2012, ordinance number 1036 was adopted, and this is what first allowed for billboards along Interstate 5 in the freeway overlay zone. Within this, there were certain distance requirements, aesthetic requirements, et cetera. The billboard requirements were updated in May 2018 through ordinance number 1092, and this added additional design requirements and regulatory controls specific to the freeway overlay zone. In September 2021, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1118, and this allowed for billboards within the free, uh, within the 605 corridor. And then this, this was again brought before you in April 2025 for ordinance number 1155, and this allowed for billboards within the M1 zone along the 605 freeway. And that corresponded with the zoning code update, or the, rather, the general plan update and corresponding zoning map update, which originally all properties along the 605 where billboards were allowed were zoned M2, and then with the general plan update, we had a change of por- a portion of it to M1. So before you tonight are still more amendments to the billboard regulations within the zoning code. So first and foremost, we wanted to make the regulations pertaining to the 605 freeway and Interstate 5 more compatible with each other. We, we tried to do that as much as possible. We found some areas where we could make them more similar. Starting off, all definitions pertaining to billboards are now being moved to section 155003, which is definitions for the entire zoning code. Previously, some definitions pertaining to billboards were embedded within the freeway overlay zone, so we cleaned that up. We moved them from the freeway overlay zone to the definition section. Additionally, we added a definition for a digital static billboard. A digital static billboard is digital, and it displays images digitally, but it must display that image for no shorter than two minutes. This is different from an electronic billboard because an electronic billboard must have the image displayed for a minimum of four seconds and then a maximum of two minutes. So it's this new type of billboard where it's supposed to take the place of the paper bill, or actually vinyl billboards that you see up there, but for a longer period of time. So that's a new definition that we're adding. Additionally, the original billboard regulations that pertain to the freeway overlay zone required a conditional use permit and a development agreement, whereas for the 605, they require an operating agreement and a development plan approval. And part of that changed with just differing legal staff and the opinions at the time, and so we are now making it across the board that a development plan approval is required for any billboard in the city regardless of its location and an operating agreement. And then also, we removed the restriction that a V-shaped billboard cannot be adjacent to another V-shaped billboard on the same side of the freeway. So in the images here, the top one is a V-shaped billboard. We limit it to an angle of no greater than 30 degrees, and the billboard at the bottom is a typical parallel billboard. And what we have found with the development of the seven billboards that exist along the freeway overlay zone is that there's really not as much of a impact or concern related surrounding the V shape as staff initially thought there might be. So we've removed that, and now applicants could have a V-shaped billboard adjacent to another V-shaped billboard on the same side of the freeway. Another change that's worth noting is along the 605 freeway, currently, billboards are only allowed within the manufacturing zone. So these yellow areas here, which don't show up too great on this, uh, big screen, but now we are also allowing them within the public facility zone. So those are these red area, the areas circled and red here. Many of these parcels are city-owned, and so it just opens up additional areas where a billboard could be located. And again, those billboards would be subject to all of the same design criteria and location criteria and separation requirements. Also, there, because we have a new billboard type, which is a digital static billboard, we are requiring a 500-foot separation requirement from an electronic billboard to a digital static billboard, or from a digital static billboard to another digital static billboard. That is consistent with the freeway overlay zone. When that was first written, you were allowed to have a billboard, a static billboard adjacent to a digital billboard that would be 500 feet apart. So for reference, here is along Interstate 5, you have the, um, in the foreground, that's technically a parcel owned by the swap meet, and then in the background is La Fel, and these two billboards are roughly 500 feet apart. So this is what it would look like, the distance between a digital static and an electronic billboard, or from a digital static to digital static. The proposed zoning code amendments before you tonight are consistent with the general plan with several goals and policies, namely, the policy LU 1.6, which is community benefits, policy economic development 4.5, goal land use dash 5, and goal land use 11. And these primarily are about the economic benefits and the community benefits that billboards can bring to the city. Because an operating agreement is required for all billboards, the city does share in some of the revenues associated with them, and that money can go into the general fund and benefit other aspects of the city. A development plan approval is required for all billboards, so they must maintain a certain aesthetic requirement or, uh, look and be maintained and operated sufficiently. And, uh, the billboards can also be used for community messaging, whether that's an Amber Alert, advertising, the Art Fest, whatever it may be. The zoning code amendment is, qualifies for a common sense exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines 15063B3, which is, or 1B3, which is the common sense exemption that a project that does not have the potential for a significant effect on the environment is exempt. So in this case, it's adopting a text amendment and not actually constructing any billboard. The item was posted on Townsend Hall, City Hall, and the library on July 28th, and published in the Los Santos Community Newspaper on July 25th. And this required a 20-day public notice because it is a change to the zoning code, and no public comments were received on this item. Therefore, the recommendation before you tonight is to find and determine that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to section 15061B3, find and determine that the proposed zoning code amendment is consistent with the goals and policies and programs of the city's general plan, and adopt resolution number 302, 2025, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does any members of the commission have any questions or comments for staff?
Why was the graffiti actually on John? No.
It was like, they're really tall. Hopefully they don't get graffiti on him.
Uh, there, there is no applicant. Uh, so, uh, the public hearing is now open at 7:20 p.m. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nobody wishing to speak. Uh, if there's no objections by members of the commission, I will close the public hearing for items number, item number 11. Is there no further commission questions or comments? I will now close the public hearing, like I said, at 6:20, uh, or 7:20. Is there no further... Objection by members of the commission. May I have a motion and approval for the zoning, proposed zoning code amendment and adopt resolution number 302-dash-2025, which incorporates the planning commission's findings and actions regarding this matter? Now, first?
I have a first.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, please conduct the roll vote.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Cassis 50.
So ordered. There's a 14-day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal this process. Uh, staff communications, does staff have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have, uh, three quick announcements for you. The first is Raising Canes, as you see on, in front of you. Pleased to announce that they will be, uh, having a grand opening ribbon-cutting event on Tuesday, September 2nd at 7:00 a.m., so we hope to see you all there. Um, second, we have our second zoning code update workshop. So our consultant, Lees Wise Consulting, will, um, elaborate on their assessment and recommendations for our code update, and that will be held on Wednesday, uh, September 24th, 3:00 p.m. at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. So we'll remind you again at the, uh, September meeting.
Nice.
And then lastly, uh, if you recall, last meeting, Director, he, uh, announced a couple of promotions for myself and for Claudia Jimenez, and so we're pleased to announce that Alejandro, our assistant planner, has been promoted to associate planner, and our intern, Cynthia, has been promoted to assistant planner.
Wow, moving up already. Quick, Quan.
Just keeping everybody happy.
Nice.
That's all we have. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, does any commission, uh, next Commissioners, AB 1234 Council Conference reporting, does any Commissioners have something to report on?
Um, nothing to report on. I just want to say that I think it's great that we have these...
I just want to say that I think it's great that we have these, you know, these big chains coming into the city. Let's not forget about the small businesses as well. They are the heart and soul of the community. So continue to, you know, patron them as well, support them. Also, the new high school season is upon us. So whenever you guys have time, go out there and support the home games. I know the kids would really love to see some of us out there.
Most definitely. Anybody else? No?
Congratulations to staff on promotions. And also, I just, you weren't on the planning commission, but Commissioner Ayala got a commitment from Raising Canes for a certain contribution. Was it to our school district? So just make sure that when Raising Canes was here, they made a commitment. So we want to make sure that they follow up on their commitment to our district.
Nice. Thanks. Good job. Alright, this meeting is now adjourned at 7:23. The next meeting, planning commission, is set September 8, 2025, 6:00 PM. Have a good week and...